Please pull a wipe out and wipe it or whatever. We don't want anybody to feel uncomfortable. I have been told for the benefit of counsel and the public that if you wear your mask and talk into the mic clearly, slowly, you can be heard and you're heard. We are heard on YouTube, but she will alert us if that's not happening. Okay, so with that out of the way, and I know I will get a text from somebody if we aren't being heard. So I'll go with the first person under Courtesy of the Floor. We have Alex Michaels. If you would come up, sir, and state your name for the clerk. You could say where you're from, and you have five minutes then.
Thank you, sir. My name is Alex Michaels with Discover Lehigh Valley, and I want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity tonight to speak to you about what's going on with our organization and with our hospitality community and for consideration on the CARES Act Fund. I've been with Discover Lehigh Valley now a little shy of two years. And when I came on board, I was very fortunate to come into the Lehigh Valley and our community that was just experiencing tremendous growth. Up to March of this year, we were having record highs. I could think a lot of my colleagues here in the room could continue to say how the area just continues to grow and hospitality is a big, strong proponent of that. We've worked really hard in the last few years with our colleagues and our regional partners to start doing some regional campaigns. And this fund will help us a lot at this point. We were, up to this point, we were doing really well. We, because of this COVID-19 pandemic and the crisis, we are now looking at a potential loss of revenue of about $2 million as an organization. And what that means for us, it really puts a limit on the marketing that we can do for the region and branding arts. And not only branding us for the hospitality community, but for the region as a whole, for economic development, for our chambers. So all I can say today is that I know everyone in this room has experienced this crisis in some shape or form, but we appreciate your consideration for funding. We would love to have the opportunity to get our community back into a recovery mode so we can help our regional partners, our local businesses, our small businesses to start to recover. With these funds, we can start doing that. We could do some local campaigns as well as regional campaigns to get our businesses back in business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have, I don't know, is it Deborah Rice? Come on up. You have five minutes as well.
Sure, my name is Debbie Rice. I'm the owner of Phenomenal Events and Marketing, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. On March 11th, I did my last event. I usually do 300 a year. This year, I have 13 so far, and my next event isn't probably until at least October of this year, losing over almost 200 events. So relief funding for me is really critical. I am not a chamber member. I'm here tonight to express the fact that I'm okay with them being on the review board. I do believe that they can look past the membership. I believe that I would have fair opportunity as a non-chamber member to apply. And I would love for funding to be available in a timely manner because it is critical to all of us. Thanks.
All right, next I have Jamie Whalen from the Lehigh Valley Economic Development Corporation. If you would come up and repeat for the clerk, and you have five minutes as well.
Hi, again, my name is Jamie Whalen from Lehigh Valley Economic Development Corporation, and I'd like to thank you this evening for allowing me a few minutes to address counsel. Our organization, as you know, was created this year, 25 years ago, to market the region in terms of attracting business and retaining business in the Lehigh Valley, both in Lehigh and Northampton County. This pandemic, as Alex has indicated, has negatively affected everybody. Our organization, half of our budget relies upon hotel tax, as most of you, I'm sure, are well aware. That comes from the visitors that stay in the hotels in both Lehigh and Northampton County. Obviously, that's not happening to the levels that it was in the past. So we're very, I'd like to thank you this evening for the consideration, for funding, for our organization and the others, for us to continue the work that we've been doing. The pandemic has actually caused a lot of stress for a lot of organizations and businesses in particular. And so we've had the, we've actually had a lot of demand on our services to provide the support to those particular businesses. But we've also continued to have folks actually still look to the region and look to Northampton County to come here. That hasn't stopped. And we've also taken on a role of providing funding through the state for some of the programs that have been made available through the pandemic. So our organization has been extremely busy. Support and continued support for our organization is greatly appreciated. We'll be able to continue to do the things that we're doing. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer. I do believe Don, our president and CEO, was coming to the Economic Development Committee on August the 6th to talk a little bit more about what we've been doing.
All right, no, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know, I was like, whoa.
All right, next I have Tom Stout from the Airport Authority. Tom, if you would just come up in your five minutes, give your name.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tom Stout with the Lehigh-Northampton Airport Authority. Just want to say a couple of things tonight in regard to the consideration of the proposed resolution. First, I strongly believe that my colleagues from LVEDC and Discover would certainly support the premise that ABE is an economic engine and driver within our region. The COVID-19 pandemic has certainly decimated aviation and commercial travel throughout our country. Aviation was among one of the first industries to be severely impacted by the pandemic, and it is one of, it's on the path to probably be one of the last industries to regain a solid foundation. Airline schedules and services from city to city are constantly being adjusted, and this turbulence is not going to end soon. As of June 30th, airport passenger traffic nationally has declined 82%, and at ABE, our June passenger traffic has been reduced by approximately 72%. The loss of passengers deeply affects our number-one revenue driver at ABE, our parking. There is no opportunity to recoup this lost parking revenue for 2020. Our budgeted $35 million in revenue is forecast to be reduced to $20 million in revenue this year, possibly less, which is a revenue loss of $15 million. The Lehigh-Northampton Airport Authority's financial state is fragile, and based on the current forecast of air travel for the remainder of 2020, passenger traffic at ABE for the year is projected to be less than a third of it was last year. What are we doing? As an essential business that never closed our doors from the beginning, our mission from the outset was to ensure all of our employees were safe, healthy, and working. The LNA quickly implemented over two dozen cost containment and cash preservation measures to help offset this significant revenue loss. By design, the majority of these measures had not been felt by most of our employees. That remains our path for as long as it's possible. We have cut approximately $4 million from our capital budget, carved out approximately $5 million of operating expenses, and we've cut another $2 million, most recently, from our debt service. But even with our CARES Act funding of $3 million, that still leaves a shortfall of over $1 million in this year alone. All the while, we are still advancing numerous facility enhancements to improve the facility for COVID-19, as well as forwarding essential capital investments. I'd like to say we greatly appreciate this CARES Act funding support being considered tonight by the county as the funds will help bridge the gap for the Airport Authority in the short term and allow us to continue being an economic driver while we are waiting for the travel and tourism industry to restart. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Kus.
Yeah, thank you for coming, and I appreciate you bringing the numbers. My question is, you mentioned you kept all the employees on, and I'm wondering if, did you consider a furlough? I guess for another month, the extra $600 payment is available.
Yes.
Did you consider a furlough while that extra $600 payment was available to your employees? And if so, why didn't you consider it?
Thank you for the question. In fact, we did implement a voluntary furlough program. We have over 100 employees who took part in that voluntary furlough. The challenge with an airport, as I mentioned, as an essential business, many of the services that we provide from fire and police and maintenance and custodial must still be provided at the same levels regardless of passenger traffic activity.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have Cassie Hilgert. Oh, there she was, all right, I didn't see her out there.
No one has ever said that, but thank you, I appreciate that.
You know the drill, I don't have to tell you.
Cassie Hilgert with Arts Quest. I want to thank you all for the opportunity and the consideration. Certainly, the last time I was in front of all of you, you had made a very generous contribution to a very ambitious capital campaign that we were excited about. Literally on Friday, the 13th, March 13th, we canceled our first concert. Typically, in a year, we do 4,000 camps, classes, and concerts a year. Half of that is offered to the public for free, and we don't know when that's going to happen again. Of course, the biggest part of that is, over the last couple of years, we've tried to diversify ourselves between small music venues, cinema, large festivals, art classes, trying to diversify our risk. Unfortunately with this, every single thing we do got shut off. And much like the Airport Authority, we have, we know we're going to be the first to shut down and certainly one of the last to open. We, of course, the biggest impact is not having Music Fest in person. And while that is a major impact to us, the bigger impact is 125 small businesses that depend on that festival, from crafters to food vendors to nonprofits. None of that is going to be available this year. We are going to do some things with Virtual Music Fest, I'll get to that in a second. The economic impact of Arts Quest in a year is $177 million on the local economy. That's hotel rooms, it's restaurants, it's other small businesses in support. Obviously, that's going to mostly be wiped out. Music Fest in and of itself is $70 million of that economic impact. And as I mentioned, we had no end date. We have lost to date $5 million in revenue and counting. We have a $22 million annual budget. We threw that budget out on March 17th, and all we are doing now is trying to reduce our fixed expenses as low as we can get it, and trying to pivot to do whatever we can to lose less. So what we did do, and I want to give a lot of credit to our boards and our community and our staff, is we quickly pivoted, and we started offering Arts Quest at home. So there were still visual arts programs. We offered musicians opportunities to be able to stream from our services into homes. We did Levitt in Your Living Room. We did a Levitt preview for our season of 50 shows. And we told folks, these are the 50 artists you're not going to see this year, but we're still going to do a preview. Normally, if we did this on the campus, we'd get 500 people there. We had 10,000 views for that show. In doing all of this, what we wanted to do was, how can we, after the exceptional efforts of our frontline colleagues, of the counties who have shown exceptional leadership and how this has been managed, what is our role in this? And we felt very much like 1984 again, when it was a city that was going through a kick in the pants, except now we were talking about a global pandemic. So once again, we went back to doing what we thought we could do best, which is connecting communities through the arts. We continued Art Smart, which is our after-school arts education program with Bethlehem area school district. We have summer camps, virtual summer camps. We pivoted and started curbside dining. When you saw the food trucks that were down there, those were small businesses that we were promoting and supporting so that they could try to keep their doors open. Now we've pivoted to outdoor dining so that we can at least try to lose less. And then finally, Virtual Music Fest. We will have 80 artists, all paid. Forty of them will be streaming on our social media pages. Forty will be broadcast live on Service Electric Cable Television, who's been tremendous in this. Here's the silver lining. We've been able to have conversations with national streaming services because we are one of the few festivals that are continuing this. And we are going to be able to broadcast this year to potentially an international audience. We have made possible Lehigh Valley spots during these streaming services. We are having other nonprofits come on, elected officials and others to say, what is the Lehigh Valley? What is Bethlehem? What is Music Fest? So our hope is that people see this. And when the time is that we can convene again, they will come back and think about Northampton County and certainly Bethlehem as a place to come back. I have to give so much credit to the staff and the boards who, in a time of such a cliche unprecedented situation, has doubled down and continue to work through a time when we don't know we are going to open again. We had 100 year-round, part-time employees. Ninety of them were laid off immediately because there are no hours. We have 67 full-time employees, which we have kept on. We received the stimulus funding, and we are about to run out of that in the next paycheck. So we will exhaust those in the next two-week period. We are continuing to talk with our banks, with our lenders, with anyone we can for forbearance payments and other tools. We're looking to increase our line of credit and do whatever we can to continue to be financially and fiduciarily responsible, not knowing when this is going to be. We've heard the longest lead time for large events would be September 2021. So how do you manage an organization through that for that long? If we can get something. What's that? One minute? So that's about it? I will leave it there, not knowing when we're going to open up again, and I appreciate very much your consideration.
Thank you, Cassie.
Thank you.
By the way, I left a message for you. I don't know if anybody got it yet.
Oh, we're working from home, I'm sorry. All right, thanks, Ron.
That's super.
As long as you were here, I thought.
Thought I'd point that out.
You clarified that. All right, I don't have any other names on the list. I don't have any other names on the list. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and address the county council? Seeing no one, we'll close that section of Courtesy of the Floor. Oh, I'm sorry, Tara has something she wanted to read that someone gave her that could not make it tonight. Go right ahead, use your mic.
Thank you. This Brooke Minnick from the Easton Ice Cream Company, formerly Bank Street Creamery, wrote, she could not be here today. She said, "I appreciate Kim Comets connecting me with Tina Smith and for her allowing me to submit this letter in lieu of appearing in person. I would have preferred to provide testimony in person, but my shop is extremely shorthanded, and I'm working my walk-up window and scooping with one of my teenage employees. There's no one else to cover. I'm writing this at 2:00 AM after working another 18-hour day, which included the last eight hours in a 95-degree basement making ice cream because I believe it is important for you to hear what's happening to small businesses like ours in Easton and the Lehigh Valley. If I understood Tina correctly, you are interested in two things. What are the impacts of COVID-19 virus on local businesses? And as a non-chamber member, do I have concerns about the chamber administering a state-county grant program? I will address them in that order, and I will try to be brief." Bank Street Creamery opened in 1998, a year after Crayola opened. It was a tremendous risk for the original owner. Easton was not doing well, and the Bank Street alley was boarded up and abandoned when the building was renovated and the shop first opened. It survived on Crayola families for most of its first 15 years. The shop closed from late November to late March until I bought it in 2015. The shop now operates year-round. We make most of our money in the spring, summer, and early fall, but Crayola families, Lafayette students, and residents enjoying shows and restaurants make it worthwhile to be open all year long. We don't make a lot of money in the winter, but we don't lose money either. It is worthwhile to remain open, and we are part of what makes Easton vibrant all year round. Personally, I grew up in Wilson and graduated from Wilson High School in 1979. After college, I had a 22-year-old Coast Guard career, followed by eight years of federal agency consulting in Washington, DC. My father was a Wilson High School grad and a World War II Navy veteran, and he spent most of his work life on the fourth floor of the Alpha Building overlooking the circle, and also worked part of, worked part-time at Farsh Shoes where the Crayola cafeteria now stands. After 30 years away from Easton, I returned in 2015 to purchase the shop from the original owner. When the virus hit and restrictions were put in place, we closed our shop in mid-March until the end of March because there was ambiguity about our status in the state directive regarding businesses and restaurants. As a result, March revenue was 50% of what March 2019 revenue was. We received permission from the city to open in April for a curbside pickup and then walked-up, walk-up window service, which we did. In accordance with directives, we provided no outdoor seating. April revenue was down 96% from the same month in 2019. May revenue was down 84%. With the transition to yellow, we set up an outdoor seating and city approval and continued our curbside and walk-up window service. Revenue from June was down 46% from June of last year. We have stopped the backward slide, but we are by no means filling our tank to survive the fall and winter. With the transition to green, we have elected to keep our indoor seating closed as it would be too burdensome and risky to permit only 12 people in our very small shop. It is summer, and keeping people outside works for now. In addition to decreased revenue, there are added costs under COVID. When a single customer buys a single $3.50 cone, two employees can consume 60 cents in glove costs alone in addition to masked, increased sanitizer use and labor spent frequently sanitizing surfaces. All of our year-round employees, two full-time and one part-time, were laid off in mid-March. I have not drawn a paycheck in four years and am fortunate to be able to survive on my Coast Guard pension. During the red phase, I ran the business mostly alone with very limited hours. Since entering the yellow phase, we have brought back three high school kids from last year, one from Wilson and two from Easton. We normally employ six to 10 high school kids in summer in addition to two part-time adult assistant managers, my full-time manager and business partner, and a part-time ice cream maker. I am presently making all the ice cream, as well as manning the walk-up window and scooping ice cream with my summer help. In past summers, we have been open seven days a week, typically nine to 10 hours per day. However, with Crayola closed and downtown foot traffic off and limited staff, we are presently open only five days per week, between five and eight hours per day, which further depresses revenue. The outlook for the rest of the summer, and particularly fall, is mixed and uncertain. Governor Wolf just imposed new restrictions on mask-wearing. Our biggest weekends of the year, Heritage Day, Garlic Fest, and Bacon Fest, won't happen this year. The outlook for fall and winter is very questionable, and if the virus becomes worse and a return to yellow or red phase becomes a real possibility, we will enter those conditions without a flush bank account from summer sales and no place for our customer to sit. We had planned, there's. Okay, this is not my statement, this is hers. Okay, I'll just skip to the last paragraph. Regarding the grant program, we are a big fan of grants, smile and wink. It's unemployment insurance for small businesses like ours as opposed to loans, which we have to repay and money we may not have. We are the recipient of an 8K loan from the GEDP for which we are very grateful, but we still have to figure out how we can repay it in this very uncertain time. It is certainly important that this grant program be administered fairly, allowing the COC to do that is not a major concern. However, it is a club in which I am no longer a member. I have no particular axe to grind with the local COC. We used to pay dues, and all the people we have dealt with, they have been wonderful. They're very skillful. They very skillfully ran Veg Fest last year, and we participated in that. Said, we stopped paying dues to the COC several years ago, $400 per year is a lot, it is ice cream sales. Without any direct evidence of a return on investment, it became very difficult to justify. Furthermore, I have philosophical differences with some of the positions the COC takes at the national level. They are so pro-business as to be anti-labor, lobbying against minimum wage increases and other worker-friendly programs. I'm a business owner, but I'm not anti-labor. My partner and I have worked for an hourly wage. We rely upon our labor and feel they should be paid a respectable wage. We pay our kids and adults above minimum wage in addition to tips because it's the right and moral thing to do. The COC is a dues-paying club, and the perception of bias is why you've asked for my input. But I trust the county understands this and will impose sufficient safeguards to ensure funds are distributed fairly. Thank you. So Brooke Minnick, it's signed by her.
That was the last paragraph.
That was the last paragraph.
I, you know, she's prolific, it was 2:00 AM. She was moved.
All right, she was moved. We all like to be moved now and then. Yeah, I mean, and congratulations and kudos to whoever organized the Write It Letter campaign. We got lots of letters reminding us that it's bad out there, and businesses would hope council does the right thing. We usually get those when there's something that's out there. So I just want to congratulate whoever organized that. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Nope, okay, we're going to move on to the county executive report. Mr. Executive, do you have a report?
I do, sir.
Okay.
Hazard pay. As you know, it ended on June 27th. The total amount paid was $1,425,246.29. Our collaboration with Easton Hospital came to an end on June 26th. During the collaboration with Easton Hospital, we tested 1,666 people. 98 of those people were positive. This was one of the more proactive counties in the entire Commonwealth in assisting, embattling the COVID-19 pandemic by establishing this collaborative with Easton Hospital. Obviously, it's come to an end because of the change in ownership of the hospital. We've had some preliminary discussions with St. Luke's about continuing. We really haven't gotten any response. The reason we reached out is because I think it's so important that we continue to provide a COVID-19 testing site where you don't need a prescription from your physician. I think that will help us stay in the green. One of the reasons we're in the green is because our folks did such a great job staying home, keeping socially distant, practicing good hand hygiene, and wearing masks. And I think if we emphasize that, and we continue to as we're out in the community, we can stay green and start to help our economy recover, which we've talked so much about today and we will again later on tonight. I do have some news. We are engaged with another provider for the potential of having another more centrally-located COVID-19 screening center. Because I think it's just going to be so important. Our final numbers were about 5.88% in terms of positives, which means we have between 5% and 6% of the folks not in long-term care facilities who are exhibiting systems who have the virus. So it's still out there. It's still out there. And I'll have more information for you as we move forward as to whether we can collaborate with another healthcare provider in a more centrally-located area. Bridges, 119 in East Allen Township, done. 138 in Moore Township, done. 215 in Lower Mount Bethel, done. That is pandemic progress. I did not take a day off during the pandemic until I knew we were going into green. And we pushed, and Mr. Durtenger pushed, very hard to keep our properly, properly provisioned projects going, like our parking lot on Wolf Avenue. That parking lot, when you come to your next meeting, will be done. It will be done, and it will be open, and that's pandemic progress. We're making progress at the forensic center. Folks from Dugan and Markin and Wind Gap Electric are all over that place. I'm told the roof's going on, and my solar panels will be there soon, which I'm really super excited about. All new construction should have solar. Frank Brooks tells me that we have received from HUD for our tenant navigation program, $1,304,71. We're going to be able to help a lot of folks stay in their apartments initially. That is such huge news. Frank believes if we get the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency money, we'll be up to $3 million for this program for Northampton County. Keep in mind, because of our collaboration with Easton, Easton gets about 43% of this money. But our collaboration with Easton has allowed us to get more money. So that is really exciting. I know I sometimes am made fun of for talking with you about our Teladoc service that we provide for our employees, but I was very proud that when we came into office, we restored all of the healthcare cuts that were made to our employees' benefits and that we instituted the Teladoc service because, one, it's convenient, and, two, it saves us some healthcare money. It's not reducing our costs, of course, but it's helping defray some of the added benefits we've added. And we are moving to a new product from that same company called Healthy Choice. The reason we're moving from Teladoc to Healthy Choice is the Healthy Choice product offers some new and exciting services, if you will, that Teladoc doesn't offer. One, they offer a musculoskeletal service. So you'll get to meet, you know, online or on your phone with a physical therapist to help you with your physical therapy if you have a bad back or things of that nature. There won't be any prescriptions, there won't be any narcotic prescriptions written, but you'll be getting your physical therapy services for your bad back. That's a great benefit for our employees. That's a great benefit for our employees. For the first time, dermatological services will be available under the new Healthy. That is such a big deal, especially for, you know, our folks and their children. They don't have to get into an office now to get their Tetra-Cycline or whatever particular antibiotic they take for their... It's such a big deal, especially to the kids who suffer quite a bit in their teenage years with acne. So acne, I think that's a great service. And finally, we're adding behavioral health services to the telemedicine provision, the Healthy Choice provision. Look, we need some more behavioral health services. I think we can see that, and the fact of the matter is, if you don't have to make an appointment and go into an office, and you can do this, you can have the appointment in your home, this will be a great benefit to our employees. Speaking of our employees, to my knowledge, since we returned to work fully, and I believe it was May 18th, the entire county was back, we haven't had one positive COVID diagnosis. And I do know that employees have been tested, non-Greystein employees, of course. You heard the Greystein report earlier, which is also very good news, but we have had no non-Greystein. Now, we will. If there's 5% or 6% out there floating around, people going to the bars, not wearing their masks, you're going to get some employees who have it, right? But to date, our mask, our mandatory universal mask-wearing policy and our temperature check is working. Like I said, we'll get some positives, but the fact of the matter is, we're a month in, and our program of safety with respect to COVID-19 is working, and we're very proud of that. Now, we're going to take some of the CARES money, and we're going to improve our temperature screening. We're going to actually step up our technology and have screeners that are either wall-mounted or mounted to the metal detectors, so that it will be quicker to get folks in and out of the courthouse. So if you're a citizen and you're coming through the metal detector, you're going to also pass through the scanner, which will be mounted to the medical, the metal detector, and it will tell us two things. One, whether you're over 100 by flashing red, and it will also tell you whether you're wearing a mask or not. Just for privacy concerns, no data is kept. Nothing is saved. It's a one-off technology, but we're doing this because, and we're doing it at all of our buildings, except the prison, because we haven't been able to talk Mr. Castora into doing it yet, but we're working on it. We're going to do it at Greystein, and we're going to do it at all of our other facilities where the public comes in. So this will do a couple of things. One, it's going to be faster. It reduces folks' anxiety. So a lot of our folks have anxiety from the sheriffs having to come up very close to them, you know, be within a few feet of them to do the measurements, so it's going to reduce that. So we're looking forward to that. It's about $78,000 to do the whole county, and we just think it's an excellent way to move forward on that. I have, you know, talk about meteoric rises in a career. Amy Cozy just gets appointed registrar of elections this year. She runs a pretty flawless primary, and now Governor Wolf has appointed her to a task force, a statewide task force, to look into... No, she's staying, Mr. Myers. She's not, we're not losing her. We're not losing her yet.
Not yet.
We're not, shit. Look, you know, you hire good people, they're going to go, right? But she's been appointed by Governor. We're very proud of a statewide task force that's looking into election law changes. So the things that we've noticed here that are problematic, I'm sure Amy will be advocating that the legislature changes in advance in November. So that's a huge, a huge deal. And if you'll just bear with me for another moment, I think I might be done. That's just, Mrs. Farrar, you don't have to get that. Thank you very much. That's just, says Easton gets 42.8% of the money. That's it. I'm done. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yes, I'm sure. Mr. McGee.
I have one question.
Sure.
This is really for Ms. Cozy. I know she's not here, and I probably should just give her a call, but I just want to make an awareness thing. For the mail-in ballots, right? If you didn't check that you want to get it every time, okay, you're going to have to go back and reapply for your mail-in ballot.
That's correct.
And I think there should be some kind of an awareness thing, because a lot of, some people don't know this. In fact, my own family didn't know it, and I had to find out the answer. I actually didn't know the answer, because I checked the box. I did it only because I wanted to see, I already know how the Excel machines work. I wanted to see how the mail-in process was going to work, and I wanted to see it early. I wanted to actually get the email, get the thing in the mail, mail it back. So I just, just food for thought and some awareness for everyone.
Thank you. I did forget one item on my report, because I didn't have it written down. The prison still has no positive COVID-19 cases in it, either from inmates or corrections officers. I've also applied for a $58,000 grant, I think from the Department of Justice, we're applying for everything we can apply for now, to do testing of the corrections officers and inmates in, universal testing in the correction facility, because as you might imagine, it's very expensive. But I think since Prime Care Medical has done such a good job advising us on how to keep the place not to be a COVID hotspot, I think maybe we ought to up our game and put some money behind testing there.
Ms. Zirinsky.
I just have a question. Earlier this week, we were given a memo from Liz Kelly about social media policy. I was wondering if there was any precipitating event that initiated that.
The answer is yes, because their personnel matters. If you wish to find out details about those matters, we'll need to have an executive session. But the answer is yes, and more than one.
Okay.
I think, any other questions? Mr. Myers.
I would like to get a little more information on that sometime, because I feel this thing is kind of stifling, and I'd like some clarification on why we did it at some point.
And yeah, I mean, I agree. And Mr. McGee and I spoke, because he's the head of Personnel Committee, so maybe at the Personnel Committee meeting or at the next meeting, we can have an executive session. You know, we got quite a bit tonight, so if everybody's agreeable, we can hold on that. Are there any other questions? I just wanted to ask, first of all, are you going to trademark pandemic progress?
No, but I see it sinking in.
I think you might, I think you have something there, you know? We're all trying to get catchphrases in this era, so that's a good one.
Thank you.
Two, well, I'm not going to get into hazard pay, because as we spoke earlier, everything's in a state of flux. And given what you said about the rate, I mean, I've driven around, I don't get it. People aren't wearing masks. I mean, and I live in the very, I don't know, the very, I'll just say Bethlehem, because people always say, oh, Bethlehem is this elitist town. But the thing is, the thing is, people aren't wearing masks, and they're eating places, and I just don't get it. So I'm concerned going forward, and I know you are, where we might end up having to go back again to something with hazard pay, maybe even before the year's out. But you'll keep us up to date on that.
Yeah, I'm extremely concerned about that. Now, one of the things that didn't get mentioned earlier at the Human Services meeting, and I think I should mention now, we talk a lot about the call-outs, but we should emphasize something positive in that regard. There were over 340 people that did not call out at all in April. I mean, you want to talk about heroic, right? I mean, and that's when, we didn't know that younger folks, generally speaking, weren't having the worst outcomes. So, yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Heckman. I think that we need to be prepared to be able to pay hazard pay again.
Yeah, and by the way, the term, I messed up. The term for living in Bethlehem, I've lived there for 40 years, is your patrician town. I didn't know I was a patrician, but if that's a compliment, I'll take it.
I'm a big fan of Bethlehem. I believe they pay the most property taxes.
It's always a good reason.
Something to keep in mind.
The other question I had, well, there's just two. One is, you want to keep COVID testing going, and you mentioned, and I agree. Can the COVID funding be possibly used for us to offset the cost of that?
So are you talking about the CARES money?
The CARES money.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's good.
Yes. We, you know, we're sort of thinking about, when we bring, I'll have to bring the next contract. I didn't bring the original one, because we were under the emergency. We're not under the emergency now. So when I bring that back, we can talk a bit about how we'll fund it, but the answer is yes, we can use the CARES money.
Great. And the last question I have is, have we had any resistance to the policy of people being temperature, the public, and masks? Have there been any concerns?
There was one individual that I am aware of that had some issues that the county solicitor, who is very adept at things of this nature, dealt with, I'll use the word diplomatically, and the gen, he wore his mask, right? He wears mask? The fellow that didn't want to wear his mask? Yeah, he wore his mask, so she handled it. One guy that I'm aware of.
All right, I was just...
So the answer is no. No, I mean, I think, I think the public's been pretty good about it.
That's great. Are there any other questions? Oh, Mr. McGee, go right ahead.
Just a follow-up on the election mail-in ballot, because that is one of the most important functions of the county. So some of these folks never filed for an election ballot before. They did it this first time. There was the box to check. I know the state's the one that kind of, but they have everybody's email. So I'm just wondering, like, and I didn't, I didn't check, I checked my box. I did not not check it. So I'm just wondering if there was, if you know, or if we could maybe get a follow-up with the elections coordinator. Was there a follow-up email going out saying, hey, you know, I mean, because I just wonder, I mean, people are going to assume, I'm just saying, they might assume that they're going to get a ballot in or not.
I'll have Ms. Cozy at your next meeting.
Okay.
And she'll answer that question for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kusak.
As a follow-up, the Trump campaign filed what I believe is a frivolous lawsuit against every county, frivolous as it applies to our county. Have we been served yet, and have you notified P Corp?
We have been served, and I believe I directed notification to P Corp.
Thank you.
And they're notified? And they're notified. And just so everyone knows, we have one drop box. It's in the rotunda within, you know, several feet of six to nine armed deputies, armed deputies under 24-hour camera surveillance. We have a pretty secure drop box.
Well, as Mr. Kusak knows, some of those center of the county, county, center of the state counties, you probably have drop boxes at commissioners' houses or something like that, so there may be some concerns. Anyone else? Mr. Myers.
On the election and the ballots, mail-in ballots, are we possibly going to put something in the printed press or otherwise stating that they can do it again? Or are those folks who did not make the check, can we put anything out to the public?
That's what we're going to have Ms. Cozy come and talk with you about at the next meeting.
Thank you.
I think we're...
I don't want to speak for her.
Okay, I think we're finished. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is he finished?
I don't know if he's finished, but I don't think anybody has any more questions for him. All right, very good. Then what we'll do is, we're going to go to old business. And the first item under old business is the public hearing on the ordinance entitled An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 685-2020. Ms. Vargo Hefner and Ms. Zirinsky introduced this ordinance at the June 18, 2020 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none. Discussion to Ms. Vargo or Ms. Zirinsky want to say anything? Or we just want to vote?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
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 Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Kusak.
Yes.
Ms. Farraro.
Yes.
Dr. Mike Vought and Mike Spira.
Thank you. Is there any other old business? Any other old business? Seeing none, we're going to, none, we're going to move on to new business. The first order of new business is introduction of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Providing for an Amendment to the North Hampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 807, Job Discrimination. Does someone want to sponsor this ordinance? Mr. Kusak, would you, is there a second sponsor? For purposes of discussion, I mean, I think...
May I just say a few things about this? Two weeks ago, there was a Supreme Court decision. It was Bostock v. Clayton County, Georgia, where it was determined that sexual orientation and gender identity is no longer permissible for job discrimination. And it was brought to my attention that in our Home Rule Charter, Section 807, does not include either of those two. Now, I reached out to Mr. Spadoni and to Ms. Kelly, and it was brought to our attention that it is included in our policy, but I believe that our Home Rule Charter and our policies should align. So that's why I think it's important that we make this amendment to the charter. I think the question that was raised, though, is, would it be preferable to put it on the ballot this year or in the spring? And I'm looking for input to see how council feels.
All right. Does council have input for Mr. Kusak? Ms. Zirinsky.
I'd like to see this go to committee first, maybe discussion in the governance committee. I think that would be pertinent, just because procedurally, I'm wondering if this, if this is how this needs to move forward, or if there's another mechanism that we can have these policies aligned. Obviously, I'm for any policy that is for nondiscrimination, but I think that we have to make sure that it adheres to the policies and procedures of this. So I think that going to committee for governance might be a good path.
I'm going to let Mr. Kusak...
As opposed to a referendum.
Yeah, if I could just respond to that, then it would be my preference that we introduce it, and then after it's introduced in two weeks, that would be the proper time to refer to committee or make a motion to table and send it to committee. So what I'm asking for tonight is a cosponsor, so that we can introduce it.
I'll be, I'll be your cosponsor.
Thank you.
All right.
So is that the proper procedure, though?
Yes.
To introduce it and then to table it, and then to go to governance?
Who tabled it?
No, he said at the next meeting...
Yes.
That one would have to table it and then send it to committee, that we couldn't have the discussion about this prior to putting it on the next agenda.
The appropriate thing to do would be to introduce it this evening, and then make a motion to table and send to committee at our next...
At the next meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
That would be the order.
Okay. Point order. Mr. Myers.
Point order, because he didn't table it. If you want to have the discussion, we should be allowed to have the discussion at this point. Am I correct? Because it's not tabled?
No, it has to be introduced at the next meeting.
The purpose of today is to introduce.
Introduce it.
Just introduce it.
Yes.
And then at the next meeting, we can discuss, table, whatever.
And then send it out.
Yeah, okay. Whatever is decided. All right, so that has been, that has been introduced and by Mr. Kusak and Mr. Myers. And there will be a public hearing, debate, and possible vote at the July 16 meeting. Now, we're going to have a consideration of a resolution affirming equality and equal rights policy. Mr. Myers and Ms. Vargo Hefner will introduce this resolution. Mr. Myers, if you want to go right ahead?
I will read it. Whereas North Hampton County has demonstrated track record of promoting racial equity, inclusion, and diversion, diversity in county government, whereas racism is identified as a root cause of poverty, constricted economic mobility. Whereas race is a social construct with no biological basis. Whereas racism is a social system with multiple dimensions. Individual racism is internalized and interpersonal. Systematic racism is the institution or structural, and is a system of structuring opportunity and assigning value based on social interpretation of how one looks. And whereas racism unfairly disadvantages specific individuals and communities, while unfairly giving advantages to other individuals and communities, and saps the strength of the whole society through waste of human resources, North Hampton County collectively, prosperity depends upon equitable access to opportunity for every resident. And whereas racism has caused persistent discrimination, disparate outcomes in many areas of life, including housing, education, employment, criminal justice. Research demonstrates that racism itself is a social determinant of health. Whereas North Hampton County is committed to eliminating racism, racial disparity in the criminal justice... the criminal justice system, to prioritize racial equity in decisions-making process, to acknowledge that communities of color have borne the burden of inequable social, environmental, economic, criminal justice policies, practices, and investment. To understand the legacy of these inequities, policies have caused deep disparities, harm, and mistrust to recognize racial equity and realize when and only when race can no longer be used to predict life's outcome. Whereas, communities of colors, class residents, those that suffer the most disabilities are more likely to experience poor health outcomes stemming from economic stability, education, physical environment, food, access, health care. And whereas, health impact of racism rises to the definition of a public health crisis. Whereas, Northampton County stands in residence with Northampton County in declaration of racism as a public health crisis. Now therefore be it resolved, that Northampton County as follows. Racism is a health crisis affecting our entire county. Two, Northampton County shall work to progress as an equity and justice-oriented organization. Northampton County shall promote policies that advance understanding, addressing dismantling racism and how it affects and delivers to human and social services, economic development, public safety. Northampton County's local, state, regional, federal initiatives in advanced efforts to dismantle systematic racism. Northampton County shall further work to solidify alliances, partnerships with other organizations that are confronting racism, encourage local, state, regional, national entities, and recognize racism as a public health crisis. To support the community, to address issues of racism, to promote support policies that prioritize health to all people, to strive for racial equality in all respects. It is further resolved that Northampton County Council requests all federal, state, local professionals to join this resolution to declare racism a health crisis and enact equity to all policies within the state of Pennsylvania. Respectfully submitted, Kerry Myers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Myers. Discussion.
Excuse me. I believe there's a typo. The third whereas above now therefore be it resolved, it should be stemming from economic instability rather than economic stability?
You're right.
Is that a motion to amend?
I guess, is it a Scrivener's error or is it a motion to amend? Motion to amend to instability.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all right with that, Mr. Myers?
Pardon me?
The changes.
Yes, I'm all.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote on the amendment.
Peg Ferraro had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ferraro, I didn't know you wanted a question on here.
Okay, I just need some clarification about the public health crisis. I just don't, and I, and believe me, I'm the oldest person in this room, and growing up in the 50s, believe me, and my first trip through the South in those years was the most appalling thing that's embedded in my mind. So, and I've seen the discrimination with Italians, immigrants, it's all part of my family history. So I would just, and as far as public health crisis, I think there's so many people who are living in poverty that this is a public health crisis for everyone. And I just, I just firmly believe in all of this, but I just think I needed a little clarification why it's, public health is pulled together with racism.
Peg, if I may, let's vote on the amendment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. We'll vote on the amendment, get that off the table.
Even here in the peanut gallery.
Believe me. By the way, I've been told, and you're gonna vote on it tonight.
Okay.
That our plastic dividers are on order. And hopefully we'll have them, and we can get back to at least a certain sense of normalcy. All right, so let's, no other discussion, let's call for the vote on the amendment.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Not to by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Now, we're having a discussion on the full resolution. You made your point. Do you want to continue or would you like a response?
I am not the most articulate person in the world.
I think you made your point.
So that's, you understand what I meant.
Mr. Myers, would you like to address that or it's your resolution, so?
The only way to address it is to hit it over the head with a hammer. Four hundred years of being a black man or a black person, a person of color. Every morning you wake up, you can deny that you're a person of color. And I can only tell you from life's experiences, I remember Martin Luther King making a change in the 60s and 50s when he did his boycotts. I can remember being a young kid going to Virginia, and I walked in the bathroom and took a leak, and a man came out and said, if I catch you in there again, I'm gonna put a bullet in your head, because it's supposed to be for whites only. Systematic racism is something that has come up to the front in the last three or four years. It has progressed to the point now that we are divided as a country. And as a man who served my country and went to boot camp with men of many color, we didn't give a damn what you were as long as you covered my back while we were in the military. Somehow, that part of life has disappeared. We come back home and we're no longer brothers in arms. I'm just another black man. As one man used, I'm just another N. Systematic racism is affecting our country, it's affecting our county, it's affecting our children. We have to change the narrative. And if we don't put it out there, we'll never change the narrative. I can't put it any clearer. It is a disease of the mind. It may not be a physical disease to some of you. But to see the Confederate flag come out of the state of Mississippi's flag brought tears to my eyes. It's tough to sit here and be one of two people of color in this room and have to explain it's like to be black. But I have no problem with it, because I'm proud of who I am. I'm a black African-American veteran, and I'm proud to be part of this council. Most of all, I'm proud to be an American and Estonian.
Ms. Vargo Hefner, you had a comment you wanted to make.
Yes, I want to support Mr. Myers in this resolution, and I also wanted to speak to what I witnessed on Tuesday and why I think health, public health crisis is an accurate moniker. Mr. Myers, along with elders of his church, hosted an event where they invited local police force officers to come and dialogue, and the title was called Courageous Conversations. I want to commend them on that publicly. It was a phenomenal program, because it was the first time people didn't pontificate and they actually spoke and listened. And why I think it's a public health crisis is because, if I may, I don't think it's one-sided, because the police officers that spoke have a whole lot of hurt, too. And that while there's traumatization absolutely in people of color, there's traumatization on the other side as well, and guilt and shame. And I witnessed a gentleman come up at the end to speak with some of the speakers. I had to wait because he was so, like, he couldn't even articulate how he was feeling. And it's my observation that there was a lot of guilt, and how do I get at this? Because it moved him. And so if that's just a small room, and that began the conversation, you think about what he addressed here in the resolution, but there's a whole lot that people aren't saying that affect their behavior, what people take home with them on both sides of the equation. So we need to do more like they did the other day, and we have to stop talking. And I hope you'll forgive me for taking the time to do this, because I'm not a person of color, but I just, I think we have to witness it and we have to do something about it. You know, I see it in my profession all the time, and the respect that people need and deserve when they come in, and they don't look like me, and their fear. You know, we talk, I think that was the most important thing that came out, that there's fear on the approach, and there's fear and misunderstanding on both sides. So if we can get at that, and if it starts as a behavioral health thing, the stress, I think with, you know, the police engagement, it's a public health thing, because they're afraid and they draw. And so it's just, as you say, I echo and appreciate, it's time, it's well past time.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just.
Yeah, no, Peg, go right ahead.
I just want to thank for clarifying and helping me understand this. As a person who has been through it in different ways, but I, you know, obviously, I'll never be a person of color. I have a daughter-in-law who's of Indian descent, and just, I know, it's just in many ways, but the most egregious is if you're a person of color, is the most egregious of all. That man, those police officers who stood by and watched should be in purgatory with all of them. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
One other statement that came out of that conversation that we had with the police chiefs, and I have to thank Terry Houck for helping me participate and put the thing on, is one thing that came out, and I wasn't surprised by it, but the amount of hate that's directed at our men in blue. We have to respect the job that they have to do, and I will always respect the job that they do. For them to be slammed and put in a category and painted with a broad paintbrush, they now feel some of what we feel as African-Americans, because we are all in one brush, and we have to change that. But what came out of that conversation, and I walked away with it, and something that we can do as a county, because we heard from small departments, that they would like some funding to help them do some training on how to approach people of color, is that the chief from Northampton said it crystal clear, we have to learn to respect one another. If we can't respect one another, we're spinning our tires. And when he got done, I shut up. That's all he needed to say. And if we, if there's people in the press that are here, please put that out there. Kerry Myers says we need to respect each other. That's the only way we're gonna heal the hearts of this county and this nation. With that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Are there any other comments? I would just say, Peg, Ms. Ferraro, we went to school around the same era. And our history classes was more based on Gone with the Wind than on some of the facts that we learned later in the 60s and so on, many of us. And so I think in some ways that it's a learning experience for every body. And also, every generation, I've noticed, takes this on. Now, there's a new generation of young people, and they're taking it on. And I have nothing else to say. I mean, it's, I agree, I hope we get to a point where we can all just respect each other, and I figure we're either gonna learn to live together, or we're gonna figure out how to die in the flames together. I don't know. But anyway, anything else before we call for a vote? All right, call for a vote. Ms. Zembo?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Biaman? Yes.
Not to by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, counsel. Okay. Next, we have, I don't know, maybe, do you guys want a short meeting? Because I think somebody killed the air conditioning in here. I have that thing tied up against 60, and it is warm up there.
Heat flashes.
Heat flashes. Oh, it could be. Anyway, I just want to say that I have a resolution here approving the transfer of contingency amount funds for the purchase of plastic sheet dividers for the county council meeting room dais. Ms. Vargo Hefner, would you please introduce this terribly important resolution?
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the sum of $525 shall be transferred from the 2020 contingency account number 05000-76050 and allocated for the purchase of plastic sheet dividers for the county council meeting room dais.
All right. Is there any discussion on plastic room dividers? Mr. McGee?
I'd just like to thank the council clerk and everybody, whoever had put this together, because it's very important. And also, they should probably add one of the sheets to the speaker's box here in the front, if possible.
Well, we'll make that a separate order, because we were told, despite the budget of the county, if we don't get them this money, we don't get sheets. So we'll, let's work with what we have now, and if that costs us another couple hundred bucks, we'll be sure that they get that money. So, anybody else? Did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to ask if there's a labor cost.
Oh, God, please.
That says no, that we have to draw from our contingent plan.
Not that I'm aware of. I think this is all, I think that's covered, they're gonna, they'll put them up, they just need the money to buy them.
Okay, because I thought.
Our public works will handle.
And Kevin Lot had volunteered.
That was our fallback. Our fallback was when we were first told, we don't do that. That was, okay, fine. Mr. Lot, Mr. McGee, we're gonna be a special committee to go out and get the plastic, get the holders, and they were gonna put the darn things up. That was out there and out here. But apparently, we came to a consensus, which is always good, and they're gonna do it if we give them the money. So, there we are. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? If not, call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Biaman?
Yes.
Yes.
Not to by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, now, we're going to have the consideration of a resolution regarding the CARES Act block grant dash Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce. Now, Mr. Lot can discuss it, there was a lengthy meeting, and actually, this has been going on for about a month. But why don't you take the ball, Mr. Lot?
You're asking me to introduce this?
Well, I mean, you can sort of say what happened at your meeting, and then what your, how this resolution is coming.
Which one are we talking about?
Well, he's gonna, do you want me to do that?
What? Do what?
The, pick the resolution that is going to be introduced. We're not gonna introduce all three. There were three.
I'm sorry, I thought we were referring to the Bi-County now. Are we talking about the Bi-County?
No, no, we're.
No, it's a Rising Tide. From Mr. Rappore.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We didn't go over the Rising Tide Community Loan Fund.
The Rising Tide, as discussed, if you, if I may.
Go ahead.
The Rising Tide, as discussed in committee, does not qualify under the CARES Act, being that, you know, just to sum it up as quick as I can, it is a loan and not a grant, so it does not qualify for the CARES Act. So we will not be introducing the resolution for Rising Tide Community Loan Fund.
So that's stricken from the agenda, because that's not up for vote. Okay. Now, go ahead, Mr. Lot.
Now, the next thing on the agenda was the Bi-County, but we're gonna put that at the end and do the resolution.
Well, you know what? Now, let's do the Bi-County then. Let's do the Bi-County and get that out of the way. I don't, I don't know if there's gonna be a lot of, what's gonna happen with that, but go ahead, introduce the Bi-County, they're here, they can then leave after the vote.
Hold on one second. Okay.
Start their holiday weekend.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just start at the important wherashes.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
You're right ahead.
Whereas, Northampton County was awarded $27,569,940, of which COVID-19 County Relief Block Grant funding by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. And whereas, the county, the council of Northampton County is desirous to make a grant to discover Lehigh Valley in the amount of $500,000 as an entity primarily engaged in tourism industry. And whereas, the council of North, the council of Northampton County is desirous to make a grant to Lehigh and Northampton County Airport Authority in the amount of $250,000 as an entity primarily engaged in the tourism industry. And whereas, the council of Northampton County is deri, desirous to make a grant to Arts Quest in the amount of $500,000 for nonprofit assistance program for entities that are an exempt organization under the 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code, 1968, and.
1986.
86.
I'm sorry, 1986. Whereas, the council of Northampton County is deri, desirous to make a grant to Lehigh Valley Economic Development Corporation in the amount of $175,000 for costs related to assisting businesses during the COVID-19 disaster emergency. Now, therefore be resolved by council of the county of Northampton, that, one, that subgrants of the COVID-19 County Relief Block Grant toll. County Relief Block Grant totaling $1,425,000 is approved. Two, that the county executive of Northampton County is authorized to execute any and all necessary grant agreements with the sub-grantees not to exceed the approved amount.
Thank you very much. All right, discussion. I would just say-
Did you not want to amend it to include the?
That's not where we're at. This, this is, this is the block grants. The, you listen, he went down the line on for Arts Quest, the folks that are here tonight. Originally, to be honest with you, and we'll get into that in the next grant, I, I was actually thinking tonight that I might move to table this, and that only was because, not because I disagreed with the amounts given or the need from the agencies that are here, but I was curious as what, what is the process? I mean, that's always been the big question councils had, at least I've had. I never really thought, tonight, I finally think I got somewhat of an answer. How did we arrive at these numbers? How did we come up with $500,000 for Discover, $250,000 for the airport? And I, I didn't know if there's a formula or something going on. And tonight, I, I believe I got the answer, you know, which was, we just sat down and figured out, here's what you're going to get. So, I assumed there was some conversation, but I think to table it would be a mistake from, at this point, from my perspective. As I said, I don't have a problem with the amounts granted. I just had a concern with the process, as I've had all along. So, I am going to support this going forward. So, I just wanted to make that clear. Mr. Kusak?
Okay. So, during our discussion at the committee meeting, the question of the, the state theater came up, and at this point, I'd like to entertain or offer an amendment to add one additional whereas statement before the now therefore. So, I'd like it to say this. Whereas the council of Northampton County is desirous to make a grant to the state theater in the amount of $100,000 for costs related to assisting businesses during the COVID-19 disaster emergency.
And, all right, is there a sec, is there a second to his amendment? Peg Ferraro. Now, the revenue you're using for that, would you state that again?
Yes. Since, as was discussed earlier, the block grant to the Rising Tide will not be available, I, I would be interested in utilizing those funds for the state theater.
What's the amount you said? $100,000?
$100,000.
$100,000? $100,000. Wait, all right. Mr. Kusak, how, how much?
$100,000.
$100,000.
Sounds like the person's right.
Tara's got a question.
Tara?
I just want to know how, I don't understand how you determine that by the Rising Tide Fund.
We had to erase the $200,000 because it couldn't be offered. We had $200,000 for them, and we can't give it to them because it's a loan.
So, we're going to give them half of that statement?
We're not giving it to them. We can't vote on it.
Forget Rising Tide completely. We can't deal with Rising Tide.
I understand.
All right, so there's that money left over. So, you want to know how he picked $100,000?
Right, because that's not $200,000. It's $100,000. It's an arbitrary amount, so I'm-
Well, so are all the others.
Yeah.
Yes.
Pretty, yes, as, as we discussed earlier, I, I, it was arbitrary.
I understand that, but I suspect that some of these funds were determined in some way, shape, or form.
You can talk.
Or were they literally just plucked out of the sky?
No, you say.
I believe Mr. McClure indicated that he used his judgment as to what he thought was appropriate, and it's up to us to agree or disagree. And I would just add one additional thing to my, my proposed amendment, that under the now therefore item one, we would increase the amount from $1,425,000 to $1,525,000.
All right, so-
Where is it again?
Therefore, it resolve.
Now, $500,000.
Mr. McGee, before, I'm going to recognize you. But where's my solicitor? So, what we have is, he, he's going to amend this resolution, but we have to make two changes, but that can be done on the same amendment?
It can.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure the clerk was aware. Mr. McGee?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine. That, that's exactly what I was, we got discussed it.
Okay, all right. Are there any other, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Myers?
Because I was late.
I understand.
How does state theater get mentioned in this? Mr. Kusak?
Let's just say that typically, when Bethlehem gets something, we like to balance that with our side of the county.
You still mean?
Yeah, those of us with Eastern area dress, yeah.
If I may, Mr. Kusak, when, when, when this was discussed, and I don't want to take Mr. Lot's thunder, so he can tell me, I want to give a different explanation. I believe the explanation we got from the executive was, these other organizations reached out, I, I believe, or maybe I'm mistaken. But the state theater did not request or did not. So, they, they hadn't really asked for anything. But what Mr. Kusak's saying, we did drop Rising Tide, because we had to.
$200,000.
So, we have $200,000 extra. But in the past, we have contributed to the state theater. I mean, it is a valuable asset in, in our county, our home county city. So, I, I mean, I don't have an objection to it. But I, I believe that was the, sort of the genesis. If I'm correct, Mr. Lot, is, is that fair?
Yeah. I think, I, I don't know if we want, I, I believe the Rising Tide number is an incorrect number. I believe we're, we're talking about Rising Tide, and that's a sub, subject that really doesn't tie into this, but I think we're saying the wrong value on what Rising Tide is worth. My impression was it was a $2 million program, not a $200,000. Just for clarification, I really don't see, the point is, there's, there's still money out there to do this for the state theater.
Sure, sure.
And I think your explanation is, well, it just, quite frankly, it just didn't pop. State theater is in the same boat as any other, you know, venue like that. And, you know, so it seemed like we were all in agreement that the state theater should get some help. So, yes, the way you summed it up, I believe was correct.
Well, thank you. Okay, so, oh, yes, Ms. Rinsky.
I'm very sorry to-
You don't have to apologize to me. Apologize to the other people who-
Well, I'll apologize to everybody then.
What do you want to say, Tara?
My question is, then, if there is funds available, more funds, obviously, and other entities come forward, now they will know, right, that they should come forward? And will they also be given grants as well? Because there are other organizations that would benefit from this money as well. They just don't know about it.
Okay.
So, the point is that they had to reach out to-
Fair enough. Mr. Lot's going to answer your question.
I believe, Ms. Rinsky, that was covered in, in committee meeting. I believe, if I, if I remember correctly, the executive said this, this money could be backed up. Let's see how the different programs we got. If the small business loans go real well, we could throw some, some of the money toward that. So, I, I believe it was explained, and I, I could be wrong. There's been so much talk going on. It was, it was to be set up as kind of a reserve backup for the other money. But we have every, I would imagine, administration in this council have every intent to spend every dime of CARES Act in this county that we can to help our community out. So, I, I don't think it's going to waste. I believe we're going to use it as a backup, if I remember correctly. Thank you.
Right. That, I understood that. That wasn't my point. My point was that other entities can reach out to the county now, knowing that there is money and that they should.
I would say this. Mr. McClure, would that end up being on our website, possibly, that in fact, there's grant money available? I don't know. You can answer her question better than me.
Sure. You know, I, I, just to be clear about how the entities that are before you tonight got before you, and I'm sorry that I, I didn't distill it down to the bone. This was out of that meeting regarding entities that have footprints in both counties.
Yeah.
And so, that's why, that's why Easton was never even on our radar. And that's why state theater was not on our radar, because it didn't, it doesn't have a footprint in both counties. So, that's, that was the genesis of this. And hopefully, these entities will now go running over to Allentown and get at least as much as you're granting them tonight from the commissioners. So, that, that's really where we're at. We, we can, look, there's going to be $1,900,000. I, I, we can talk about it, but I don't have any recommendations for you tonight on that.
Mr. McClure, if I'm correct, part of it is, this isn't the end, this is the beginning in this process. And if there's others out there, and as you said, this was the by-county type situation, but this isn't certainly like, if you didn't get it in now, you're never going to see a grant.
No, this is, this is our good faith effort that came out of that meeting with the state senators to try and assist entities that have footprints in both counties, and with the idea that Lehigh County will also be helping them. I doubt Lehigh County's going to give the state theater any money.
Will you let us know?
Nor will, nor are we going to give the Lehigh Valley Zoo any money.
Mr. McClure, hold on.
Right?
Mr. McClure, to follow up, no. Will, will we be apprised of what Lehigh County does to the, with these groups in terms of-
Absolutely.
Good, thank you. I'd like to know what they do. Ms. Rinsky still has the floor. I'm sorry.
Well, I just want to follow up and just ask. If this resolution in itself should be exclusive only for these by-county entities, and that if there is subsequent money that could go to entities that are only in Northampton County with that money, should they be allocated in a separate resolution utilizing whatever money there is available to them?
I don't, I don't think there's any harm in adding the state theater to this resolution.
Okay.
I, I don't, I, it doesn't break faith with the overall spirit of what we're trying to accomplish. It's a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Lot?
Tara asked my question.
I saw your head. Mr. Myers, you had a question?
So, I'm clear. This one point that we're putting out now is coming out of 22.1 million? Is that what?
Yeah.
That no longer is-
That doesn't exist.
That's what we're using, right? Am I correct with that?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. That's, no, no, I'm happy. This, all right, no, $2 million, we get to give to somebody.
Mr. Kusak?
And I would just argue, you, you can make an argument that the state theater via the Freddies does have a footprint in both counties.
Absolutely.
Well, that's a good argument. Thank you.
You know what? I think a lot of good arguments were made to give the state theater $100,000. Is there any further discussion on that? Now, I believe we have to vote on, did we vote on the amendment already?
We did not yet.
We did not.
All right. So, Ms. Zembo, I believe the amendment is that we are taking $100,000, and we're giving it to the state, but at the same time, we're reducing the block grant totaling from 1,425 million to 1,525 mil.
That's increased.
We're increasing.
Thank you. We're increasing. We're changing the number. How's that?
Right.
All right, good. It's like Catholic school with spell checkers. All right, anyway. So, Ms. Fargo Hefner, if everybody's clear on that, let's call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Biaman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinske?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Biaman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
That's a by-county 9000.
Okay, thank you. There you go. Good. I wish you all luck. I know you need it.
Oh, gosh.
All right. Now, we will go to consideration of a resolution regarding the CARES Act block, CARES Act block grant dash Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce, which, I mean, it's really about the actual CARES Act block itself. It includes the chamber. But Mr. Lot, would you like to introduce it? I believe it's the resolution that the county executive had, that your committee recommended.
Yes, and I'm going to start with the important wherestes. Whereas Northampton County is desirous to establish a $4 million small business grant program to support businesses with fewer than 100 employees. That will be administered in partnership with the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce for the program delivery fee of 3.5% of the funds available for the program. Now, therefore, be resolved by council, by council of the county of Northampton, that the county executive is authorized to partner with the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce to establish a $4 million small grant program to support businesses with fewer than 100 people. Two, that the county executive is authorized to execute any and all necessary agreements with the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber not to exceed the approved amount. Applications will be reviewed by a committee consisting of one Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber staff, the Northampton County Director of Community and Economic Development, the Northampton County Director of Financial Affairs, and two members of Northampton County Council. The action to be taken is followed. This committee will make recommendations to the county executive for his final approval, and checks will be issued by Northampton County Department of Fiscal Affairs. County Council will, number two, county council will consider each application for approval or denier, denial of said application.
All right. This was discussed at Mr. Lot's Economic Development Committee meeting. Is there any discussion on this? I know you received three resolutions. I, I do think, though, that you, you deserve to understand what's going on, because there's been a lot of work going on. So, if you'll allow me, I'll give you what I saw as a brief history of where we're at, at this point. On the June 18th meeting, the county council requested more information on the government, on the grant process, and particularly that of the role of the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce. After discussions with individual council members and reviewing the minutes, a memo was sent to the county executive to, for a pause in anything, and to, to reset and discuss the procedures and options. That was, I sent after a review of the county council meeting of June 18th, 2020, and feedback from individual members. I am requesting that you suspend all COVID-19-related funding outreach work and work by the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce on behalf of Northampton County. There are questions and concerns related to the terms and conditions of the contract between the county and the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce. Within a few minutes of that, I received a reply from the executive that said reject it. So, then, Mr. Lot had talked about having a meeting with the executive, but we wouldn't have been able to have it until this past Tuesday, 6:30, 2020, which was only about 48 hours from this meeting. So, also, there was a concern that that was the same day as Mr. Myers' racial justice roundtable, and that there may be a conflict, and it could create some issues. So, Mr. Lot and I had discussed this, and we both decided that we would wait for his economic development meeting and the county council meeting of 7:20, since they were on the same day, and we would go, we would, we would work on it then. Coincidentally, county council received an amended resolution on Tuesday, 6:30, 2020, as well as numerous letters from businesses asking us to please support the plan of the administration in the chamber. At that same time, Solicitor Spadoni and myself were, is there a problem? Hello? Do you want to add something?
No, he just asked me a question.
Okay, fair enough.
Does he have this resolution?
All right.
I don't have that resolution. That's why.
Oh.
Which one?
Which one?
The LGM. The one that we got in the meeting from administration.
All right, he'll, he'll, he will have it, and, and I'll make sure you get it before we're done. All right, let me continue then. Solicitor Spadoni and myself were working on a resolution addressing the concerns expressed in my original memo, 6:25. Now, what happened was- All right.
I don't have that resolution, that's why.
Oh. Which one?
LGM. The one that we got in the meeting.
All right, he will have it, and I'll make sure you get it before we're done. All right, let me continue then. Solicitor Spadoni and myself were working on a resolution addressing the concerns expressed in my original memo, 6:25. Now, what happened was, the county, the resolution that we put together, which was the first resolution, which people got with a memo attached, was, had a memo. Now, this didn't really go out because this was to see if, because council had given me what their concerns were. And it was information, really based on information and the chamber's role. So this was sent to council. I don't know if you got it, but you should have. This is the resolution I worked on with Solicitor Spadoni to address the concerns county council expressed regarding the CARES Act funds. The resolution addresses the lack of information and documentation of how decisions have been made regarding funding amounts to various entities. It specifically relates to the county's relationship with the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce. This resolution was being prepared prior to the most recent resolution received from the county executive regarding CARES Act funds. So having said that, Solicitor Spadoni and I are reviewing the county executive's resolution and working on a possible compromise resolution to address county council's concerns as well as the desires of the county executive. That resolution will be available tomorrow. So the first resolution you received from county council dated July 1, 20, was before we really knew about the compromise or the new resolution the county executive had given us. At that point, my belief was, based on his reply to me, that I don't want to talk to you people about any changes. So that's what we did, and that was to get, hopefully, the administration's attention and see if council wanted to say, hey, you know, we got to talk about this. Again, I didn't do this on my own. I was doing this based on info I got from members. Anyway, Mr. Spadoni and I again conferred and worked on what we believed to be a fair and equitable compromise that was based on the county executive's most recent resolution. And that's the one you were just giving, I believe. And this amended resolution addresses the council's concerns over the process used to determine the specific amounts of money granted to the various areas previously mentioned. It also agreed with the executive's concept of a committee and a defined role for the Chamber of Commerce. We believe that it would shine a light on the process and assures the public that the entire procedure will be open and fairly handled. It also ensured that county council will have access to all contracts and documents related to the CARES Act funding in writing. This funding will be county money once we receive it and should be subject to the same scrutiny as any other county taxpayer money. County council needs information to make informed and responsible decisions before approving any payments and to all entities involved. The public should expect us to put the needs of the community ahead of other collective egos. The public demands that the executive and legislative branches, while independently elected and constructed, must work together for the common good. This compromise, based on the executive branch resolution, is a clear step in ensuring legislative responsibility and fiduciary oversight of the CARES Act funding. Let me say, we've had a lot of discussion aimed at us reiterating the suffering out there, reiterating people closing doors, reiterating how much people want to get money out there. I have family members who are in business and have suffered. So I don't really need another churching on why this is important. Sometimes when you ask a question, you just want the answer and not a speech on how great this is being done and how it's going to be done. So having said that, I spoke with Mr. Lot, and I came to the conclusion that I'm going to not be introducing the resolution Mr. Spadoni and I worked on, not the first nor the compromise. I don't believe it really has support. However, I will have an amendment I will be offering to the executive's resolution. I'm fine with his resolution except for just a couple points. So I just wanted to set that record straight, at least from my perspective and what I was working from as the president of council. So there you are. That's it from me. So discussion.
What are your amendments?
Well, does anyone have any amendments? I'll offer an amendment. All right. My amendment to the resolution is to add the paragraph. I would like to add the paragraph that says, I'll have to excuse me. Like you, I've been flooded with these things. Mr. Spadoni and I have spent more time than I'd like in his conference room. All right. What I'd like to add is, the Northampton County Executive and the Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development shall provide to Northampton County Council all contracts, documents, and information related to the application, acceptance, rejection, and dispersment of CARES Act funding. Now, it's my understanding, as executive said, well, we're already doing that. It's superfluous. I don't see the need. If it's superfluous, I don't see the reason not to do it. It just guarantees in writing, much like with a mortgage or anything else, exactly what it is we're saying. And by the way, the amendment, the resolution I did with Mr. Spadoni, Mr. Spadoni read it, and he's the attorney, and he said some of the language could be taken either way. So it was a skillfully written document, and my concern was, well, we should have maybe some plain English and tighten some of the words up. So you would examine ours closely. While similar, there are some changes in sentences. But you know what? I agree. I want to get this out. I still care about certain things, and the big thing I care about is the one thing that council seemed to want, or I think you should want, and that's information. Now, tonight I learned things, and the reason I'm willing to do this is, I learned things tonight I didn't know until tonight. I learned that really the chamber hasn't done anything yet. I, again, given things, I didn't know they hadn't done anything yet. So I don't know why it would have been a hassle to stop working with the chamber if we're not working with them. So the thing is, so I learned things tonight. I learned that there's nothing written down. Nobody knows what's going to go where. But we did get amounts that were directed to certain areas. I still would be great to figure out how that all happened, and I'm sure we're told if you. My problem is, I don't want to ask 20 questions, the game of 20 questions. If I ask the right question, I'll get the information. But if I don't, I'm not going to get the information. And that's happened in other situations with administrations. That's just from my own experience. I may have experienced that. And that's fine. That's how it works sometimes. But I think on this, the 27 million is a lot of money, and I don't think it's out of bounds to recommend that one paragraph be added. Now, I will go along. Does that mean we're going to get flooded with papers? We may, but you know, I mean, keep this in mind. When Harry Truman was a senator, and he was in front of the war, had the war guys in front of him, he was on the committee, War Front Committee, before he was VP. And he heard all this testimony and all these things given to him, and he came up with a great phrase. I always love presidential phrases. If you can't convince them, confuse them. So I think that, are we going to be confused, maybe? Sure, possibly. But you know, the job you have here is the job you have here. I mean, if you wanted to run just to have a title and show up and cash a check every couple weeks, that's fine, but I think the public demands a little bit more than that. And that's my take on it. With that, I offer my amendment. I don't know if it has a second. So that's my amendment, seconded. Kevin, Mr. Lot.
Just so to clarify, what your amendment is, is number four on this, on your?
Number three.
Number three.
Number three, okay.
That's it. That's all I'm interested in at this point.
So you don't want three committee members from the council?
I didn't bring that up, but I'm just saying, that's what, we're on one amendment right now. That's that amendment. I have one amendment I'm offering, that.
Are there any others that you're going to be offering?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'll give it some thought. Mr. Lot.
Yeah. You and I have spoke long and hard about these issues. Number three, your amendment, and I will support your amendment because it's stuff we're going to get anyway, but I think it's almost duplicating what the idea, the idea of putting council people on that committee was to bring this information forward to council. I don't, it almost seems like we're duplicating our duties here, but you know, I think it's, I don't know if we're, it's stuff we're going to get anyway. But, so I would support it because it seems to me like we're going to be reviewing those documents anyway. I just think what we're changing now is instead of letting our two people in that committee kind of bring it as oversight for council, bringing it back to council. Everybody on council will be able to review everything if they so choose. I just, I don't know, I think it's getting a little burdensome, but I'll support it.
I mean, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I mean, to me, the committee's main role is to sit with the others and work through and see what they should do or not do. And certainly, you could recommend that certain documents come or certain documents don't come to council. But I just feel I'm less of a committee person, more of a county council hall, I call it the committee of the hall. But what you just said, I agree with. Council can ignore things or they can read it.
Because in principle, I totally agree with you. That's our job. But you know, do I think council wanted to look over tax returns of businesses on applications? And I mean, how far do we get in the weeds? And we got to be careful on that. And that's all I'm, that's, you know, I understand our jobs, and I want to be involved and make sure we do the oversight we should do. But I'm just a little nervous about this, how deep into the weeds we're diving with this amendment, Ron. And in principle, I totally agree with you. It's our duty. It's our responsibility for oversight, and this is a lot of oversight. It might be a little bit too much oversight, but I'll leave it on that. Thank you.
I mean, if somebody wants to amend my amendment without yet, I mean, I'll be happy, but Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Would it be more palatable if it says, as requested? If it said, shall provide to Northampton County Council, as requested, all contracts, documents, and information? Therefore, if I didn't want to see it, I don't have to ask for it. But if I'm not on the committee and said, I'd like to see this form, or I'd like to see this, then I get what I ask for, which has been, I think, the total source of contention and why we're at this position.
Mr. Lot.
I love the clarification. I think that's very important because right now, I spend hours a day reading all the emails because of this pandemic, trying to figure out what the right way to go, and we get swamped with paperwork. And I think that's, you know, if the, if the, Mr. Heckman's comfortable with modifying it, I think, you know, as requested, but it needs to be gotten to as requested because I certainly don't want to look through all these different businesses, tax returns, and do things like that. So I would support the amended amendment if there is one.
Well, we're still talking. I would say this, again, I get back to the game of 20 questions. I may not know what I want because I don't know what's there. So I mean, again, we've been told, you'll get this. Don't worry, you'll get this. I mean, it reminds me of going buying a car. Don't worry, it'll be taken care of. And by the time I get home, I realize the rugs weren't taken care of. So the thing is, I'm just a guy who likes to put things in writing, but I mean, I'm not going to push the issue more than just to say, I don't need to see anybody's tax returns for that matter. I mean, Frank, I don't even know why the chamber would need to see anybody's tax returns. I think that should be just information for our CCED. In fact, I had some pushback on that, and somebody said, why am I sending to the chamber my tax returns? So I mean, there's a lot going on in this. I'm coming at this from a county council person's perspective, and certainly, you know, somebody, that's why, that's why you have nine members on this county council as opposed to one person. It's easier with the administration. You've got one guy who's going to make all the calls, and you fall in line or you don't. Up here, you have nine individuals who are trying to mesh and work things out. For me, information is important. How to parse out what documents, contracts. I mean, I just, I get concerned that what'll happen is, we're going to sit down, people will be sitting down. Like, I learned things tonight. I didn't know. I mean, I wish we would have been told some of this three weeks ago, two weeks ago. Everything's on the fly. So I mean, okay. So now, you know, now it's said, well, don't worry. Now you'll know. All right. I mean, I like to see things. I don't need to see tax returns. I don't know, you know, I would kick it to the solicitor in terms of the sense of what information would he see as something that we may or may not want to specifically see? If council as a whole feels comfortable that you, as a committee, will see everything, which by the way, is not in the resolution, the entire resolution, it does not say you'll see everything. It just says you'll sit on the committee and review apps. But this specifically said that you'll see everything. So again, it's a language thing. I mean, if someone wanted to cut split hairs, they could say, well, you didn't pass anything that said you get to see everything. You're sitting on the committee. You'll see what is put in front of the committee. So I don't know if I'm seeing everything or not. Again, this was the crux of the matter. The chamber is out. You notice that we didn't put the chamber part in because I never had a problem with the chamber. We just wanted to know what their role was. And until tonight, I didn't really get the sense of what their role was. Originally, we were told, they're going to do everything. They're going to send the apps, they're going to process it, they're going to send out the checks. I never heard anything until tonight that was really changing. So I mean, I'm fine with their role. That's why I'm not even going to mention them. So I put it out as it is. I don't even know, was it you seconded it? So that's out there. The amendment's out there to be discussed, so go ahead. Have at it. Ms. Zerinsky.
Well, can I just ask, what information do we actually get when we approve the CBGB grants? Because this, these grants have been somehow equivocated with the CBG grants. And from what I remember, the committee reviews the information, and then they give us a list of the grants that are approved. We never get all that background information as a council. We trust that the people that are on that committee have gone through the information and that they're bringing forward the appropriate grants. So why is it that we're now asking for a ton of paperwork?
All right, well, let me answer your question because you've brought this up numerous times. It's the same statement you've made many times. I will say this, you don't have to ask for it. I put out an amendment saying I'd like it. I don't, the CDBG, we're not talking about CDVG tonight. There's processes for everything. Some processes council's been doing for years, like Rising Tide. We've worked with them for years. I probably wouldn't have had a problem with them. But this is something new. This is big. You are going to give money to businesses. You are going to give money to municipalities. If you don't think that some businesses and municipalities aren't going to come strolling in here in December, January, February and saying, what the hell happened? Why didn't I get some money? What's going on? I was cheated. I didn't get this. If you can sit and say, don't worry, I looked at everything and I'm confident that this was handled correctly. Or you can say, well, you know, why should I have to look at it? I mean, you know, I've got things to do.
Mr. Heckman, I would really appreciate it.
You're not recognized. You're out of order. You're not going to monopolize the meeting, Tara. You're out of order. That's it, you're out of order. Sorry.
That's fine.
That's good. Here's the thing. You ask, you're asking about the thing. It's pretty plain and straightforward. You feel the people should, we should say, hey, do what you do. We do other things like that, and there's other things we don't do like that. I get it. You're pushing for it, and I saw that at the last meeting. I mean, you got to do what you've got to do for you. But at the end of the day, we're talking about this amendment right now and what people want. You're opposed, you feel they do a great job.
I did not say I was opposed.
All right, Mr. Myers is recognized.
My issue with this is that I've been in situations before where I put my faith in other people and I got burned by the stake. I'm not getting burned by the stake this time. I really would like, if I wanted to request information. I really would like, if I wanted to request information on it, I want to look at the information on it. I'm trying to figure it out, but I, I did get some clarity on a few things earlier as to why our people aren't handling this. And I'm still somewhat confused why our, our development people aren't taking care of this, but okay, I'll go along with that. Only issue I have with this at this point right now, and I have to agree with Mr. Heckman this, is because I've been, I, this is not my first rodeo, and I've said it many times before, it's awfully important when you're looking at $27 million. That's a big number, it's a huge number. I don't want to be here in December and somebody comes back in my face and I don't have an answer for them. I've been that, down that path before. So I would prefer that we have access to information, that's my, I don't need to be up there telling tax records, but I, I would like to know why this person was picked. And I don't want to hold, you know, I, I'm, I'm assuming and I'm in good faith that they don't have to be a member of the chamber to get this money, and I want to make sure that's crystal clear in the record, that whoever's in need gets it. So that's what I'm looking at, I don't want to put any roadblocks up, try and stop people from getting money. I just want to make sure that it's being dispersed correctly. And I want to feel comfortable when somebody comes back to me and says, "Yep, yep, that's why, you know, I went along with it." So that's, I'm done with that.
You know what, and as Mr. Lot said about the committee's structure, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to even go to this point with this because I, I do trust my fellow council members. You know, trust but verify, but I have respect for everybody up here. I respect the fact that you're independently elected officials, just like the county executive. And you were elected for your judgment and for, hopefully, your responsibility. If it's, if council would like, if we could have that, but say, act funding that paragraph as, would it, would it satisfy people as determined by the committee working on the grants? So in other words, uh, Ms. Ferraro and Ms., Mr. Lot will definitely be the two people going in. Mr., Mr. Lot knows what he's doing, Ms. Ferraro has tons of experience, most experienced person sitting in here. So, and we'll see if there's any more people. But the thing is, if you want to add all of that and then say, isn't, uh, CARES Act funding as determined by the members of the execu- the Oversight Committee? I don't know what we're calling it, I'm not going to go back and read it, somebody can tell me. But that committee made up of Ms. Barron, uh, Ms. Smith, and all so on and so forth, and two county council members. So I'm willing to say, you know, as determined by the council committee. And that way, then I can come back to you guys and say, when I start getting yelled at, "Why did you not have this forwarded to us as a council?" Are you okay with that? Well, I'm, I'm just giving you, I've sat through many political wars, as Ms. Ferraro has. I mean, I'm just saying, look, I'm, I'm laying this out here, I just like to get it in writing. I mean, do you think I'm saying, "Oh, boy, all I want, I love to have all kinds of papers thrown at me." I mean, I, I use up my little bit of two gigs that the county gives me now on my computer. So the thing is, uh, I, I don't want it necessarily, I think I need it. So there's a difference between what and need, but I'm willing to, to say, you don't have to send it on to us. If in the course of what you're doing as a committee, if you say, "Hey, you know what, how is this determined?" Or, or "What is the contract?" And in your judgment, you say, "I think county council ought to see this as a whole." And then you, you, you know, you would get it to us, I'm okay with that. I mean, I don't know what more I can say, if, if, if that doesn't apply, then I would say, "Please vote against this and we'll move on." I'm willing to put that in.
So we'd be pulling out three and putting in its, just so I underst-
No, no, you'd leave three in, but it's all subject to
Committee approval.
The committee approving. In other words, you would make the determination as to, as to, um, all contracts, documents, and information related to the application, acceptance, rejection, and dispersment of the CARES Act funding as, as determined by the Oversight Committee, whatever it's called. Yeah, I'm just adding that to the end of the paragraph. You'll see things, you'll see things, I mean, and, and if you feel in your judgment, which I, I respect your judgment and Ms. Ferraro's judgment, that I'm not sure about this, or maybe this is something I'd like all of council to see before they are given the checks. I mean, you know, we've, you say, "Here, pass the checks," just like we've had with grants sometimes, we said, "Wait a minute, how did this happen?" It's your job to pass it, well, you know, you want to know the process. So to me, it's, this process is extremely important, and it's been very loosey-goosey up to now. We've gotten figures, but few facts. So I, uh, I just think we should have the ability to get information and have it in writing. So if somewhere down the road, there's confusion as to, well, did you ask the right question to get the right information? We have something in writing. I, I would like to get the opinion of Mr. Spadoni on that, as he is our legal representative in terms of helping us out.
As the solicitor, it's inappropriate for me to enter my opinion.
I don't want you, it's just your, the legalese of it.
The legalese of it is, is that I think you need to now amend your motion, look for a second, have discussion and a vote. And then if that passes or fails, then you should proceed on the resolution itself.
So amend the amendment?
Yes, he's now amended his amendment that he initially made.
But before you leave, before you leave, is what's written there in that paragraph illegal from your, from your perspective?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, because we get law thrown at us sometimes, this is legal, that's legal. All right, so, does anyone else want to say anything? Sure, I will certainly do that. I think the amendment is as, as, as the Northampton County Executive and the Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development shall be, shall provide to, I'll make it easy, shall provide to the Northampton County Council on the committee all contracts, documents, and information related to the application, acceptance, rejection, and dispersment of CARES Act funding. And cau- uh, full council will receive such information as deemed necessary by the council members. Yes. So Northampton County Council members on the committee, all contracts, everything that's there, documents, information related to the application, acceptance, rejection, and dispersment of CARES Act funding. And whatever I said after that. And as, uh, deemed necessary by
It's two verbos.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I, I, I've never had this much problem in asking for information, but anyway.
As requested?
As requested, well, no, CARES Act funding, information will be provided. The committee has the power to forward any information it determines as necessary to the full county council. Did you get that? Such documentation shall be forwarded to the entire county council if deemed necessary by the council members of the committee.
There you go.
Got that? That's it, then we're there. So do you want to read the whole thing? Please, re- uh, you could, if you would repeat that, repeat it. So if it gets shot down, at least I know what got shot down. The Northampton County Executive. They shall, they shall put forward information they deem necessary or requested by indivi- by the county council members. Did you get that? Members. Fine, why don't you read it again? Hello? Do you have a mic, Linda?
There's no mic over there.
All right, well, that's why nobody's hearing you outside, so I'm probably going to get a bunch of texts on that. All right, so go to a mic, come on up, go to a mic and read it.
The Northampton County Executive, oh wait, I'm not, the wrong paragraph. The Northampton County Executive and the Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development shall provide to Northampton County Council members on the committee all contracts, documents, and information related to the application, acceptance, rejections, and dispersment of CARES Act funding. Okay. Now, see, this doesn't sound right now. Shall forward to county council any information that they deem necessary or requested by county council members.
Right, well, finding, before you say that, it should be, members of the committee shall.
Okay, that's where it didn't make sense. Okay. Members of the committee shall forward to county council any information that they deem necessary or requested by county council members.
Thank you. Ms. Ferraro, a longtime English teacher, I'd like to know your opinion, at least in the writing. Does it make sense to you?
It does.
Is the syntax okay? Is the grammar okay? Are we in the right purse, I mean, okay, good. I can't vouch for spelling, but that's where we're at. That is my amendment. I don't know, uh, Ms. Vargo Heffner seconded it, so there you are, it's on the floor for discussion.
Sure.
Yeah, it's new, so I'm sorry. That's my amended, amended, amended motion, which replaces anything I've been talking about. That's my amendment, it's been seconded, discussion.
So what you put out before is what we're going with, what you got right now?
What we got right now, that's one paragraph.
What Linda just said to us is what we're going with, correct?
That's correct.
And that's been amended so we don't have to do anything else, we're right, Mr. Spadoni?
There's been a second, it's appropriate, we'll capture this consideration.
Okay, I'm good.
Yes, Ms. Heffner.
So if I want to see stuff, I can ask them to give it to me, correct? That's what I want, I wanted the right to request information. So I have to now go to the committee members to get it, but I could still ask and you could still give it to me, correct?
Well, you have an, you have an access point now that's beyond the administration. As a member of the legislative branch, up to now, you would have to go to someone in the administration, you'd have to know what it is you want, and say, "I'd like to see this." Now, you may get it, you may get it late, you may get it, whatever. They're on the committee, they should be seeing just about everything that comes along. They, at least, are on your same, in your same, uh, branch government. So I'm sure Mr. Lot or Ms. Ferraro, if you said, "Gee, you know, I'm really confused about something, we just had a presentation." "Would you be able to procure for me X, Y, or Z?" And then they could look into that for you. So they're, they're on the committee, but they're also the eyes and ears of council, uh, like other committees. I mean, so we've, we, we keep, we're condensing, condensing, condensing down. But yes, you should be, that would be my take, unless they would have a problem with that, I don't, I, I don't, I don't see why. I mean, I don't think they're going to get a lot of requests for information from council, but it may come up.
Let me just clarify, if I may, like, like, just without any more explanation, I just want to say that, that there were two issues I had with this. This addresses one, the right to access information as we need. If so-and-so says, "I submitted that application, how come I didn't get it?" I should be able to see the documentation so I could answer their question. Granted, you're going to do the heavy lifting, that's fine, but if somebody comes to me and I have to have background data, I'd like it. And, and I'm saying that because on my first year on council, I got put on one of these committees, and an egregious mistake was made by me because I was told, "Here's what it is, it's all good." But I didn't know what I didn't know. Now I know what I know, so now I know to ask for information, and I want the right to ask for information. Because I didn't know who was who and what was what, but now I know a little bit more. I know two things.
There you go.
So if I needed, I need three, I want to ask. That, and the only other thing I want, which is a whole nother issue, is Mr. McClure said he'd agree to three members?
Well, let's
That's later, but I'm just stating it now, that I'd like to see three members, but other than those two things, I'm good.
Get through this, okay, well, thank you. And now, does anyone else have any further comments? I, I mean, now's the time, because then we'll call for the vote, if, if you want to have a, ask a question, if you want to ask a question. Oh, Mr. Lot, go right ahead.
Just to answer the councilwoman's question, I, I'm sure Peggy and I will be more than happy to grab anything that goes in front of that committee, but, but do understand, not everything with the contracts, I mean, I, I believe in council, we should see everything, but not everything's going to be brought in front of that committee. So there may be times where you ask me for something that the committee just does not have access for. Then I'm going to go right back to what we'd be doing anyway, I'd be going to the administration. I just put it out there, I mean, that's the way I see it, I'm not going to have access to everything in that committee. I will bring whatever access I have, whatever information that is in that committee, if somebody asks for it, I will do my best to get it to you. But understand, there may be some stuff that's not in that committee, and then I'm going to be do- I, I'm, I'm just going to be a middleman between, and I don't know why I'd do that, but I'll be the middleman in between Ron and, 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 or, you know, council and, and the administration. So I just want to state that, um, I don't have a problem with it, I'll be more than happy to be transparent with any questions, you know, and I'll get the information back to you, but I don't know if every piece of information you're going to ask for is going to fall under our committee, thank you.
And the spirit of this, may I, I'm sorry, the spirit of this whole amendment is so that that doesn't happen. That you and Ms. Ferraro, or whoever else is sitting on that committee, is privileged to see everything, and that there shouldn't be things withheld, because that has been the issue. And that's what the whole, I believe that was the original intent of his statement, is that if council asks for something, and that's why I said, "As requested," I don't know if I want to see everything, but maybe one day something strikes me and I want to see it. We have the right of that oversight, and I don't think we should give it away. So, you know, I think we're making it really more complicated. But again, you, you as a committee member should have access to everything, no questions. And if you don't want to look at it, you don't have to, but you should have the right to look at it, as should we all here.
Mr. Myers.
I gotta echo what Lori's saying, um, Kevin, because of the fact, the matter, you know, even if I was sitting on a committee before I make a decision, I'm going to look at everything, cross the, cross the Ts and dot the Is. So whatever access, if there's something that you're not happy with, you have the right to say, "Get it to me before I approve it," just like we do now. So, long as, I, I'm happy with every decision you make, partner.
Well, I mean, I, I think what, what, what Ms. Heffner said, though, is true. I mean, we, we know what we know and we don't know what we don't know. I mean, I didn't know tonight, I heard about, well, this is how this was, that we, how did the chamber's numbers come? Well, they didn't come and ask us for that, we gave them the numbers. I, I didn't know, none of that was discussed. I didn't know, none of that was discussed. Maybe it's my fault because I didn't ask the exact specific question to get that answer. That's happened a few times now, and with something like this, I just would like to, I think, I mean, this, honestly, I mean, I'd like Mr. Kusick and Mrs. Ferraro to challenge you on this, but I don't think this is necessarily out of line with things in the past that councils have said to executives or administrations. We'd like to see the information if we're handing out money. I mean, we do a budget, to me, this is almost like a budget. I mean, we get a lot of information on the budget. You got $27 million you're dealing with. And I learned things tonight I didn't know, and I was under the false impression based on the things I'd heard before tonight. So again, I'm going to leave it at that. I've said more than enough. I worked as council wanted me to on two resolutions. Mr. Spadoni and I tried to come up with a compromise that we thought would address, again, the concerns council gave to me, as president, and also take into account what the executive had proposed in his second resolution. Keep in mind, since this was such a tight timeframe, and you know that, Mr. Lot, we talked, we discussed this. We only got his on Tuesday, as I had already been working with Mr. Spadoni. So we're 48 hours out, and this, that happens a lot, too. You know, you get things at a meeting or a few hours before, and then you said, okay, well, go vote on it. And if you don't, people are going to die. So, I mean, or the grant will go away, and so on, and so on, and so forth. That's a common thread, too, over many, many years. So, I mean, at this point, I've said my piece. I think we have it in writing. I honestly, on this, would like to call for a vote. So sparing anything, could we call for a vote on this amendment?
Mr. Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giaman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yep.
Mr. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
No.
That is by vote of 8 to 1.
All right, thank you. And again, if this creates a problem or hassle, let me know. I mean, you've had more communications with the administration. I haven't had any since I was told I'm rejected. So that's been it. So, I mean, you, I know you all have talked. So maybe, maybe, you know, you could let me know, and that's all I'm asking. All right, so that is an amendment. Are there any other things that people want to amend? Yes.
I would like to make an amendment that we say that there are three committee members and that those committee members aren't necessarily chosen at this meeting by you, but maybe are designated by the county executive.
Wait a minute, just so I understand, you, and I'm sorry. You've done a good job of defending what, everything they want on this deal. You're saying that we have a committee, and our council committee members should be picked by the county executive?
Or by somebody else, but what, okay.
Because I'm the president of council, and we're a separate branch of government. And I do have, I am empowered to do something like that. So that's what I plan on doing. You'll get to see things, and you can argue your case, you know.
That's fine. I do think that we, there should be three committee members on it.
All right, well, Ms. Vargo Hefner, I mean, you started talking about
If she just keeps it as three members, I'll second it. If it's as picked by somebody else, I won't. So if it's just, I'd like
No, but I think that it's kind of arbitrary, the way he picked it.
Well, I believe that the county executive had already agreed earlier tonight that he would concede on that. So if everybody else is amenable to that, I think it should be three.
But we need to know the, Mr. Lot, we don't even know the exact wording of the amendment, so that's why.
Yeah, so this non-worded amendment, I would think we, if we put three members on, some people work, some people have a lot of things going into life, and this is truly a part-time job that we were doing. Some people may not be able to make these meetings. Maybe you should consider two with, having that third
Well
as an alternate.
Mr. Lot, you and I had this discussion, and I'll bring it up now. Yes, that factored into my decision. I need to know, and I will go along with the administration and oddly enough, DCED, as people who know me, they might find that surprising. But we want to move on this, and I get that. And I don't want us to have to go back to our schedules and say, well, I can't make it, I have this, I have that. You're retired for the most part, except when you're deep diving and, or up in the mountains, grandchildren. Ms. Ferraro's available. She'll be here at least through, till we get through this thing. And the floater, I'm putting myself on it first because I can make it. And I am going to say that I will decide who sits on this committee. That's going to be mine. If it's him selecting, or it's going to be rotating, I'm not going to go for it.
What do you, what do you mean?
Well, you said it should be arbitrary. I don't know what you said, to be honest with you. You just said
It's okay.
You wanted him to pick it, and then you don't like the fact that I'm picking.
Well, no, you just, it's okay.
There was a reason why we put those people
I understand, you explained it to me, thank you. And I explain, I understand now why you've chosen the retirees in the group.
Well, it works out conveniently that he's the chair.
You're newly retired.
He's the chair, he's the chair of the Economic Development Committee. Mrs. Ferraro has more experience in this county government game than any of us put together. So, I mean, and she, they happen to be retired. I think it works out great. We're getting what we want, or at least what I thought some of us wanted. And at the same time
No, it's fine.
I thought it made sense. Anything else?
But I'm glad that you clarified that of why you chose them because I, I think that that didn't really, I didn't understand it. So thank you.
You are more than welcome.
Not the one retired guy off.
Well, keep in mind, I said
You could be an alternate, I'm sure.
I said, I'm an alternate, they're permanent. I'm going to go in, but we can, we can flip it back and forth, believe me.
I got another something on my plate.
Well, that's what happens. We get a lot of volunteers for things with committees and whatnot, and then all of a sudden, there's issues, and I get that. I mean, people work, they have a life. Not that Peg doesn't have a life or Mr. Lot, but they can make some room in their life.
Okay.
All right, so there's a, there's an amendment on the floor, and it's been seconded. Is there any other discussion on that, three members? If you want to say that, two and an alternate.
No, we said three.
Three, leave it at three. Yeah, we, let's not, you know what? We've been parsing tonight, I think we're all getting tired. We're parsed out, so there's
Call the question.
What's the question?
The vote, call the question.
Call the vote.
Oh, I thought you had a question.
No, call the question.
All right, call the roll, please.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Giaman.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yep.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
That is by vote of 9 to 1.
Okay, now, if there are no other amendments, I think we can go back to the amended resolution that we received from Mr.
McClure.
McClure on Tuesday.
Yes.
So, let's go, open to discussion.
I think it's been beat to death. Look at the last question.
It's semi-tenderized. All right, Mr. Lot.
Yeah, I just beat this dead horse a little deader. And, you know, there's been so much said, but I must say, it started off difficult, and it's ending sort of difficult. I think we'll be at a good place. But I do want to commend the administration because we did state several things we wanted, and this, this resolution that he put together does reflect what this, what my committee and what I believe that the council had said. I think the amendments are, you know, just kind of clarify, hopefully just clarify what's already there, and I'm good with that. I'm also, I said it so many times, but I said it one more. I'm a labor guy. Labor guys don't always get along with the chamber, but I know this particular chamber is going to do a good job. Ms. O'Donnell's proven herself out in the community several times, so I would, I will be supporting this amendment, and I will be supporting the chamber, and I look forward to working with our partner in this project.
Thank you, Mr. Lot. Thank you, Mr. Lot. Anything else for the good, Mr. McGee?
I just want to say that the chamber person was up here, and they did tell me that they're going to look at streamlining an application that can be filled out online securely and sent to, and maybe on the county site. I think something like that in today's day and age, because the contact and everything, it's important, and they're getting paid, you know, I guess the money they're getting, and hopefully some of that goes towards the technology piece. So it helps streamline the application process.
And I would guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, the contract that'll be written with the Greater L.A. Valley Chamber of Commerce will have to be approved by council?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, yeah, I mean, look, and as I said before, and I want to say this again because she's here and she's waiting, she has her bags packed, she wants to get out of here and go, and I want her to get out of here and go. This was never, I don't feel it was ever counsel coming down on the chamber or bad-mouthing the chamber. Kevin and I spoke about this a few times. It was just confusing to us, and we did have a concern, and I feel it was a legitimate concern, that if applications go out for county funds with a chamber heading, that it may or may not come off well or not well. And that was a concern, and if the checks went out from the, and initially, I thought you were going to get the apps, you were going to look at the apps, and you would send the checks out. So a lot has been clarified this evening, which I appreciate. I know more now than I did before tonight. And again, this was never really, to me, about the chamber. I never had a problem with the chamber being involved. I probably wouldn't have had a problem with the Economic Development folks being involved, the Cunningham's group, if, when I think about it. But you know what? We'll work with you. You've got this list. I understand you have the list. There's magic lists out there. And maybe one day, our Department of Community and Economic Development will get a hold of a list, will put them on that task with all the other things they said they do. So anyway, thank you, though. I want, I want to thank you for sitting through this and not taking offense with some of the craziness. It's government, unlike where you are, and Tony can say, everybody shut up and go home. We don't have, we don't have that luxury. All right, so I'm going to call for the vote.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giaman.[1642.88]